And this is one of the most important lives that I have ever done in my entire career as an investigative journalist. And I'm walking up a hill here. And please smash that like button on the way in. This is extremely important where I am attempting to protect children in Union City Common New Jersey Schools. This is extremely, extremely important. And I'm live in Union City Schools, I mean, Union City, New Jersey. Welcome, Good Guy Activism. This is one of the most important videos that I have done. And this is one that I will be asking people to call today during this livestream to the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office in Jersey City, New Jersey. I'm looking for the number now. And if anyone can find it, the Hudson County, New Jersey Prosecutor's Office. And there is a T-shirt, and I have to speak in code because of this platform we're on here. Hey, welcome everyone. God bless you. Thank you for joining me midday here. This is an extremely important video. And I'm going to ask you to peacefully call if you aren't inspired, to call the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office in New Jersey, Jersey City. Because I have received allegations of a teacher in Union City. And if you can find the number, Tommy V, and just keep pasting it in there, they need phone calls during this livestream when I tell you what's going on. And they need lots of phone calls peaceful. Because I have received information and I did a video where I had a person named Jonathan Almeida on my show. And I posted it on Facebook. It hasn't been on YouTube. And this person is a 2003 graduate of Union City Schools. He used to be a football player. And he claims that a football coach, assistant principal and teacher, Edwin Marinez, M-A-R-I-N-E-Z, during football practices, and I have to speak in code for this channel here, would whip out his... dot, 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 and show the... dot, dot, dot football team. I asked how old he was. Thank you, Tommy. I asked how old he was as a high school student. He said he was 15 years old when he alleges the coach would whip out... dot, 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 dot. And he would ask, according to the students, and according to Jonathan Almeida, 2003, very courageous graduate to come forward, he would say, the coach would say, "Who wants to see my... dot, dot, dot?" He'd get the whole team in a huddle. And he would then take his... dot, 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 you know, and then show the... dot, dot, dots. And that is so criminal. And Mayor, corrupt Union City, New Jersey Mayor and Senator Brian Stack, and the entire Board of Education and Sylvia Abato, the current superintendent, has been covering up that for years. Plus, I have numerous students who have come to me telling me that they are claiming that is true and that he was also having S with many people that attend that school for years and years. And even married one of his students when she turned 18. But was allegedly having S with that student since she was in ninth grade. This is a huge story. I posted the video two weeks ago of Jonathan Almeida. You can see it on my Facebook. It is the pinned post. And YouTube would probably not want that on here. So it's on my Facebook. Facebook has been very supportive of the work I've been doing. That's my pinned post. You will see the entire 29-minute video that I did with my good friend and colleague, The Exposure Report, where we interviewed Jonathan Almeida, a 2003 Union City grad, and he claims this former football coach, he doesn't teach football presently, I just found out today, but he's assistant principal now, and a teacher in Union City, New Jersey Schools, that he would whip his... dot, dot, dot out after asking the kids, "Hey, who wants to see my... dot, dot, dot?" It is egregious. It is wrong. And Mayor and Senator Brian Stack refuses to suspend that teacher. Unless he's been secretly suspended, that I don't know about, and I don't think that was the case. So I am asking each of you to peacefully contact the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office that two things, three things have to happen. Edwin Marinez, there has to be an immediate investigation. They won't do it. I've been there. I've called them. They said, "No. You gotta, someone has to come to us first." I say, "I'm giving you a tip. I'm a journalist." Many of the people who claimed they were S assaulted by the teacher, allegedly. I'm making no statements of fact. I want to be very, very clear. These are all allegations. I'm simply a journalist reporting on allegations. However, I was told point-blank from someone in the SVU unit, that's the S Victim Crime Unit. No, no, we're not gonna do anything. We will not take your tip. Someone has to come to us. Well, most people who have been S assaulted will not come forward. I understand that. They're scared. I was, I was S assaulted by a Catholic priest for four years, starting at seven years old when I was an altar boy. I know what it's like to initially come forward and not be believed. And but I never gave up on that. And I eventually, it eventually hit the news, and two dozen other men came forward within two weeks of my story coming forward. So I thank Jonathan Almeida, 2003 Union City grad, for being that brave man who came forward. And there's been numerous other students who have come forward since, saying that the football coach, assistant principal of Union City Schools and teacher, Edwin, M-A-R-I-N-E-Z, is how you spell his name, Marinez is pronounced, would whip his... dot, dot, dot. And even though I posted that video interview on my Facebook page two weeks ago, Mayor and Senator Brian Stack of Union City, New Jersey, the entire New Jersey Board of Education, and Sylvia Abato, the Union City, New Jersey Superintendent, refuses to suspend Edwin Marinez. By law, they have to. Any other city in the country, there are credible allegations. Credible allegations. Even, even if they weren't credible, they would still have to suspend until the outcome of an investigation. However, these are very credible allegations, and the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office, I was told, will not open investigation into him and protect the children. This guy is still working with children! I know it matters to you. It matters to me. It doesn't matter to them. I give tips. I said, "Here's a tip." "Oh, but we gotta, we gotta hear from a victim." Well, guess what? I said, "Go to my Facebook page. It's the pinned video, and you will hear from an alleged victim." Jonathan Almeida, who was very matter-of-fact. He wasn't looking for anything. He just, he just thought about it two weeks previously. And he wants to make sure this, this teacher does not work with students. And if he's innocent after an investigation, I will be the first to post that and report that. And if he's guilty, I will be the first to report that as well. And here, I'm gonna show you on my Facebook page here. And it's Leroy Truth, and please, most people on YouTube are not subscribed to my Facebook, and I've done, I've used that mostly for Union City. And I mean, intense stuff I've got on there. I'm also exposing voter fraud that Mayor Brian Stack is allegedly doing. If you go to my Facebook page, and it's all backwards because of this camera, it's the pinned post here.
Somebody had posted your link, asking about any information about Mr. Marinez. And I just felt like it was a good time to just finally come forward and, and say what we experienced on the football field. I had mentioned to them, you know, it's just something as I, I just wanted to get off my chest, where I was like, you know, as a kid, I didn't really think of like the gravity of the situation of what was taking place. But now, about thirty years later, almost twenty, thirty years later, as an adult with children of my own, I just realized, you know, that's, that's not behavior that should be acceptable in, in any profession, really, especially being with kids. My job today, if I was to do what he was doing, I'd easily get fired without any investigation, you know, so...
I want people to know what, what you experienced, and as, as detailed as you can remember.
Sir.
And, and, and who, who was Edwin Marinez to you?
Yeah, absolutely. So just to start off from the beginning, this is, at the time period that this happened, we're talking 2001, 2002. 2003, I graduated, but I wasn't on the, the football team that year. I had actually left Emerson and went to go do night school to make sure I graduated in 2003. So from 2001, 2002, Marinez, Edwin Marinez, was our football coach. He also taught driver's education and sex education or health class, as they call it.
Wait, wait, that, as we said, as we said in the phone interview, that is ironic. He taught sex education, and I have received more allegations of sexual misconduct from him than anybody. So I, my guess is Brian Mayor, Brian Stack is my guest that put him in that, in that role. Just because he's, he's that sick. So anyway, continue, please.
So, um, so again, Marinez was the football coach for Emerson Bulldogs at the time. And he also did driver's education and sex education. And, uh, so what essentially happened was when we'd be in football practices, occasionally, not, not like this was like an everyday occurrence or anything like that, but periodically, he would call us into the huddle sometimes. And again, I don't know what his rationale was in thinking that this was just some joke or just play it off. But we'd all get into the huddle. He'd say really quick, nonchalantly, super quick, "Do you guys wanna see my dick?" Like, just like that, really fast. And you, you really didn't have a minute to process it. You'd be like, "What?" And as you're processing it, he'd flash out his junk real quick and then pop it back into his shorts.
Can you hear me? Put a 1 in there. Can you hear me? Here, I'm gonna make a call here. Can you hear me? Did something happen to the live? Yeah, did something happen to the live? We just lost, lost, what happened to it? Did they? I think, I think, I think they deleted it. Alright, since we're, okay, since we're back, we only got 27 people in here. I think, I I, you know, I think it was cut off. Alright, so, alright, thank you. And I just called Aria. This is my editor. If you need an editor, oh, we got 50 people back in the room. Keep coming back. I think they may have, they may have cut it off. And so please call peacefully that number. Everybody, okay, thank you, Aria. Okay. Alright, we're back. Looks like they pulled the plug on it initially. We had more and more people joining the room, and they pulled the plug on it. So I don't know what's going on here. And I just got an important call here from some a tip here. Let me see what's, what this tip is here. I got lots of, lots of tips coming in. And let's see. That's up. And I am doing a livestream now, period. Okay. Alright, welcome back. You're coming back in the room. Thank you, everybody, for coming back. Keep smashing that like button. Please share this video with everybody. You heard from Jonathan Almeida himself. And it looks like they, they turned livestream off for a minute. And I'm so glad you're back. So put a 1 in the room if you can hear me well and if the video is working well. And I'm gonna tell you, you know, where we are now, because right now I am, I am going to go to the Union City Board of Education and demand, and they peacefully demand, they suspend teacher Edwin Marinez. If they haven't already, thank you for all the 1s. And I've called Sylvia Abato twice and told her about the allegations. And she refused to call me back. She refused to talk with me. In New Jersey, as most states, they have a duty to report. If there are allegations of S assault against students, there is a law duty to report. In fact, every single teacher in Union City has to report. Unfortunately, not a single one has that I'm aware of. So I'm going to the Board of Education right now. And I was also told, by the way, to talk with the head of HR. Her name is Diane Capizzi, or Capiz, yeah, Capizzi. And you know what she told me? I asked her, "Hey, do you know about, about Edwin Marinez and the allegations of S assault against him?" Because also, allegedly, he was having S with students for years. It wasn't even a secret. It was open. Allegedly, as young as nine, I'm sorry, as young as ninth grade. Allegedly. Alright, so we're at Union City Board of Education here. And hold on. Here. Here. Okay, hold on, there's a door right here. And this is during business hours, as you see. Hey, thank you, sir. I gotta do an Oprah request, and I gotta talk to some, some of the people in there. Here. Open up, no, you're right here. Open the door. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, sir. Yep, I appreciate you. Just here to do Oprah request and also ask some questions and okay, this security guard was very professional. I want to give him a commendation today. And, alright. Hey, hello. So my issue is with none of you, by the way. I appreciate your professionalism today.
God.
What's your name again? I want to give you credit, Ozuna. Okay. And I'm here to see, to see Sylvia Abato, to talk with her, and it's an emergency because of a teacher who has been accused of S assault against students and indecent exposure.
Sir, what's your name?
Alta Grasso.
Oh. You can... Uh, let me tell you something. Well, see, it's about, you have to make an appointment.
Not, 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 not with an emergency. This isn't, I've, I'm gonna tell you, sir, I have, I have called her twice. I'm gonna tell you respectfully. I have called her twice to make an appointment, and she has refused to call me back. So I am here to see her right now, because I know she's here, and to talk with her about the allegations of S assault against Edwin Marinez, the teacher, so that she will suspend him immediately.
Sir. I tell what they say. They need, they need appointment. You got appointment?
I called her twice, sir, and she would, she would not-
Who'd you talk?
I talked with her secretary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hold on, one moment.
Alright, thank you. And they've been giving the runaround now. Here. Let me turn this around. They've been giving the runaround for I, I may have had the camera facing the wrong way there the whole time. They've been giving the runaround for over two weeks now. Sylvia Abato, I've called her, attempted to make an appointment, attempted to talk with her, and an appointment, and she refused to call me back. And she has a duty to report. She saw the video of Jonathan Almeida, ladies and gentlemen. I want to save the children who work there right now in Union City Schools. And she won't do it. Mayor Brian Stack won't do it. They're covering up for Edwin Marinez right now, calling the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office peacefully. And if you're so inspired to demand that they open an investigation immediately into Edwin Marinez, that he be suspended, and an investigation into Mayor Brian Stack for the cover-up, and the entire Board of Education of Union City with the President, Yedalia Jinnal, and Sylvia Abato, the superintendent of schools, who refuses to address this. It's been two weeks since the explosive allegations on my show, and they have said nothing, no public statement. If it was a lie, why didn't they say it's a lie? Why didn't they come out with a public statement? Been two weeks and there's been nothing. So please keep smashing that like button, everyone, as well. So I'm here at the Union City Board of Education. And MP, thank you. I want to protect the children. Bottom line. I'm here to protect the children. And I've been calling Sylvia Abato for over two weeks. She won't talk with me. She won't acknowledge that Jonathan Almeida, 2003 graduate, he made those explosive allegations that the coach was exposing himself to the STUDENTS. And I have now from other students as young as seven years old. And he's still teaching. Hudson County Prosecutor, they have a new prosecutor temporarily named Wayne Mello. And ideally, he will do the right thing. Thank, thank you, Tommy V, and all the mods for putting the information in there. And you can call them now peacefully. I've gone to them, and they refuse to open investigation. They said, "Oh, well, you, you need proof." I said, "I'm giving you a tip. You can listen to the graduate of Union City Schools, Jonathan Almeida, 2003 graduate, on my Facebook. It's the pinned video." That's who you need to talk with, not me. I'm simply passing on the information. And they refused. The SVU unit, that's the S Assault Unit in Hudson County Prosecutor's Office refused to open an investigation. Said, "No, the victim's gotta come forward." It's a tip. Do you ignore a tip? Especially when you, you hear the victim on my, on my show, on my Facebook. Alright, sir.
The secretary told me, Ms. Abato, you got a meeting right now. He can-
Well, she's gotta break that meeting. This is about S assault. This is about protecting children from S assault in Union City Schools.
Listen. Yes, sir.
Oh, here, I'm, I'm trying to protect children from S assault in Union City Schools, and I have credible allegations that there is a teacher that has been, been exposing himself to them, and she just, she just ran away. This is Union City Schools, ladies and gentlemen. Anywhere else, they would have suspended that teacher immediately. The police would have opened up an investigation. And there is nothing here. This is disgusting. They all need to be indicted and arrested, every one of them. Alright, so so can you tell Sylvia that she has to come?
That's what I told. You got a meeting? Got a meeting. What you can do?
Well, I'll tell you what. Again, I have no issue with you, sir. You're being very, very professional. And who else, who else is in administration that you can have me meet with now?
Well, right now, right now, he got a meeting. All of it. I can break the meeting.
Break the meeting?
No.
No, no.
He can break the meeting.
Do you care that children are being S assaulted? There's allegations of a teacher, right now, there's teaching right now that is allegedly S assaulting children. So that is, absolutely, you need to break the meeting for that.
I told you what the secretary say. You got a meeting?
Are you, are you, are you a man? Are you gonna be a man and stand up for children right now? I'm asking you, man to man. This is an emergency. They have ignored Jonathan Almeida, the graduate who said that that teacher allegedly exposes himself to STUDENTS. And he's still teaching. See, this is Union City Board of Education. You could certainly put their number in there as well. Yeah, he is a coward. I've done everything up until coming here right now. I've called numerous times Sylvia Abato, the superintendent of Union City Schools. She refused to come to the phone, even though I was told she was there. I gave her my number, called me back. It's an emergency, two weeks ago. And I called recently again as well. Then they said, "Oh, you have to talk to the director of HR." Her name is Diane Capizzi. Diane Capizzi, the director and head of HR, who is also an assistant to Sylvia Abato, two jobs. She said, "I will not do anything with allegations. You have to send me an email that's signed by you." I, I have a recording of that. I'm gonna be posting that on my Facebook later. Then she hung up on me. I said, "I don't have to send you an email. This is a tip. I'm the journalist." I said, she said, "I need email" from you. No, I said, "Go to my Facebook page. It's the pinned video. Listen to the alleged victim, Jonathan Almeida, who is allegedly one victim of possibly hundreds. Possibly hundreds." And this, this is how they treat we, the people here. I'm trying to save children. This teacher has been accused of having S with students for decades. Numerous people have come to me. Not just Jonathan Almeida. There's the indecent exposure? Which he, by the way, made into a joke. They all say, "Oh, he made it like a game." And whoever, whoever looked at it, he would point them out and say, "You're the, the, you know, dot, dot, dot one." And then the other kids would make fun of them. And I was even told by a graduate that he even used the F-word, the, which is of course a terrible, terrible slur. Use it in front of the students, referring to, to gay people. And he's still teaching, ladies and gentlemen. And here's the thing. Stack and the board and Sylvia Abato have been covering up for decades. But since Jonathan Almeida came forward, in his own words, he came to me. He heard about the work. He heard that there were allegations against Edwin Mar the vice president, vice principal and teacher at Union City Schools. And he came to me. And then we did a phone interview, which is also on my YouTube channel. What happened after the phone interview? When I asked, because I called Mayor Stack's office too. I said, "There's allegations." Mayor Stack, by the way, he controls the entire board. Used to be elected, I understand. He changed that. They're all hand-appointed puppets. Sylvia Abato, the superintendent, is a puppet of him as well. And I called Mayor Stack's office as soon as Jonathan Almeida did a phone interview with me. They refused to let me speak with him. And the phone hung up on me. I'm trying to protect children from credible allegations. And then you know what? Suspended? Again, he gets due process. He needs due process, like everyone. Why didn't Edwin Marinez get suspended? Pending the outcome of an investigation. And as I've said, if he is innocent, I will be the first to report if he is found innocent after a third-party out of New Jersey State investigation. If he's guilty, I'll report that as well. Simple. But he had to be suspended. And you know what I was told why he wasn't suspended initially? From a secret board member of Union City Board of Education, who secretly and confidentially reached out to me. They said Mayor Stack didn't suspend Edwin Marinez, assistant principal and teacher of Union City Schools, because they, they said, "Oh, he said that Leroy Truth made that up, that, that phone interview was AI." Can you believe that, ladies and gentlemen? They hear from this student, Jonathan Almeida, class of 2003. Given him a call to corroborate it was real. They refused to immediately suspend a teacher with credible allegations against him. And they instead said, "I created that with AI, that phone interview." So then a few days later, along with The Exposure Report, and please subscribe to The Exposure Report. He's my very good friend. He is amazing and please subscribe to his YouTube channel, The Exposure Report. Always has my back. Him and I did a video interview with Jonathan Almeida. Surprise, surprise, he's not AI. But that's the lengths that Brian Stack, corrupt Mayor and Senator Brian Stack will go to attempt to cover up S assault allegations. And he's just one of many. The Sergio De Rojas, I'm gonna tell you another story here. All allegations. Sergio De Rojas, he was a sergeant in Union City Police Department. And according to the alleged victim, who has been in contact with me for over, I think it's over a year now, she said that she was constantly being S harassed by Sergio De Rojas, a sergeant, and her supervisor. And she was begging, begging Chief Everett of the Union City Police and Mayor Brian Stack at the time to transfer her. "Please transfer her so she can get away from this guy constantly, S harassing allegedly, according to her." And also sending many, many, many text messages, even driving in front of her and her husband's home and allegedly, you know, just hanging out there. And she was told point-blank, "No transfer for you." She begged to be protected. Now, she shouldn't have been transferred in the first place. As soon as that allegation was made, Sergio De Rojas should have been suspended. When you hear the end of the story, you're gonna be, you're gonna be freaked out. You're gonna be enraged. So this person, and, and give me a 1, make sure, make sure our stream is still good here. And this person, this alleged victim, she should not have had to beg for a transfer. Sergio De Rojas should have been immediately suspended pending the outcome of an independent investigation. But no, she was told, "No transfer for you." So she was forced to work with them. And about two months later, after she begged to be transferred, he cornered her in a small trailer, there was a police dispatch trailer, because she was a female police dispatcher for Union City Police Department. And he cornered her in this police dispatch trailer and forced her to do dot, dot, dot with him. And after that was done, there was evidence on a chair. He left like nothing happened, like, was like, like they, they just had an ice cream together, according to the alleged victim. Then she demanded the chair with evidence be preserved for DNA sample. And guess what happened? Mayor and Senator, and he's also the head of the New Jersey Senate Judiciary Committee, Brian Stack, allegedly ordered that chair destroyed. And there's someone who was a police officer at the time who called me, and he said, "That was, he saw it in the dumpster. He saw it. It was thrown into the dumpster." Now, was Sergio De Rojas fired? No. He was suspended for 45 days for committing honor settlement was given to the alleged victim, of which only $40,000 to her, $60,000 went to the lawyer. It's gonna get crazier. You're, you're gonna stay with me. You're gonna get blown away by this. Somehow, she only gets $40,000. The lawyer gets $60,000, allegedly. And it should have been millions because of what happened, the whole, you know, asking for a transfer and being refused, and eventually she, she gets assaulted. Mayor and Senator Brian Stack is a sore loser. She got $40,000. So what did he allegedly do? He sent a billion inspector to her and her husband's house and fined her $30,000 for an illegal, an alleged illegal apartment. Turns out, it wasn't an illegal apartment. It was something grandfathered in. They did have an apartment. Completely legal, but it cost the victim $10,000. But it cost the victim $10,000, the alleged victim, $10,000 to fight it. Insane. It gets, it gets crazier. Stay with me. Mayor Brian Stack is the number one protector of S predators in the entire history of New Jersey. Did Sergio de Rojas get fired? No, he wasn't fired. He was promoted. After 45 day suspension, at some point after that, Mayor Stack promoted him to lieutenant. And they retaliated against the alleged victim. And the retaliation got so bad, she moved out of the state. But is it done yet? No, no, no. Stack rewards loyalty because Sergio de Rojas has been Stack's personal bodyguard for years until he, until he retired last year. So did he go and? They got away with it, but hopefully not with you. We, we don't let him get away with it. No, Senator, I mean, Mayor and Senator Stack, he had the Board of Education. Right here, hire Sergio de Rojas upon retirement, paid to be the brand new safety coordinator for 11,000 city school children. Remember, I've been talking to the alleged victim for over a year. Very credible. So that Sergio de Rojas, another example of how Mayor Stack promotes the alleged assaulters and protects the, and protects them in retaliation against the victims. So, so who else, who else can I talk with? I need to talk with some administrator because children need to be protected. There's been allegations of S assault against Edwin Martinez, a high school teacher and assistant principal. So I need to talk with someone here in administration.
Well, the administration only say you got a meeting.
Well, you, you, you go in that meeting. I'm telling you now, go into that meeting now, protect children. Do you have children, sir?
I told already.
Do you have children?
I told already.
But do you have? Oh, what do they say?
They saying you can break the, the meeting.
Alright, you heard it for yourself. They said they can't break the meeting. And then lastly for now, do you have children yourself, sir? Do, do you?
You have to come in all the time.
Well, I'm asking you. Do you have children? Do you, do they go to Union City Schools?
No.
Probably because you're smart and you know there's just a lot of S assault that goes that Brian Stack, the mayor, and the entire Board of Education here, who's too busy having a meeting about how to stop me. That's what they're having a meeting about now. They've been looking at my past, they're, they're calling everyone. Did Leroy Truth ever do this or do that so we can get him? That's what they're doing for the last two weeks. That's why they haven't, one single time, they haven't even acknowledged that Jonathan Almeida made these explosive allegations against assistant principal of Union City New Jersey Schools and teacher Edwin Martinez. If it's not true, why didn't they immediately come out after the interview and say that Jonathan Almeida was lying? They could have done that. It's silence. And I'm calling on every single Union City teacher who has not come forward. There's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of you. You all have a duty to report. Why haven't you come forward? Why aren't you demanding that Edwin Martinez be suspended, pending the outcome of an investigation? You have a duty to report, all of you. You've seen the video. Oh, here we go. Here's someone right here. Hey Victor, this is an emergency. That's Victor Gruyon. And he works for the Board of Education here, and you can still hear me. I need to talk to Sylvia Abato and the entire Board of Education right now, Victor Gruyon. I have allegations of huge S assault against Edwin Martinez, who's a teacher right there in Union City Schools now. I bet you couldn't hear, but you just closed the door on me. Alright, so I'm gonna ask one, one last time. And then we're gonna go outside. And please keep putting the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office number in there. Thank you, Tommy V. They need to hear from people who actually want to protect children. Because Union City Board of Education doesn't. They know I'm here right now. They've seen the video. And they're saying, well, we're not gonna come out. We're in a meeting now. They won't address S assault allegations against the teacher, who still works there. That spanned over 23 years, these S assault allegations. This is like the Catholic Church moving people around and around and around when they're, they're accused of doing dot, dot, dot things. And for those of you who don't know, I am a survivor of S assault from a Catholic priest when I was an altar boy from the age of seven for four years. So I know what people go through, what the survivors go through. And any survivors here, call me confidentially. And please put my phone number in here as well. 305-707-8325. 305-707-8325. I'm trying to protect the children of Union City. And Mayor and Senator Brian Stack is blatantly covering up the allegations of S assault against Edwin Martinez. He needs to be suspended immediately. He should have been suspended two weeks ago since I did that interview. Alright, so, yeah, what are you gonna say?
It's a private building. If you, you don't go out, the police coming, he can arrest you, okay?
He just, he just threatened to arrest me. This is actually a public building. So he just said, if I don't leave now, they're gonna call the police. I'm gonna be arrested for attempting to, to protect children from S assault. And when, sir, when did this become a private building? Since this is a public building. This is the Board of Education of Union City, public building, right? Who told you that? Oh, some, someone just called him up. He just got a phone call. That's what they said. So who called you up? Who was it that called you up?
I told you.
Have some courage, sir. Have some courage.
I told you what they say. If you don't stop, the police coming.
If I don't stop trying to protect children?
They coming to, looking to you, okay?
Alright.
If you wanna continue, continue.
Have, have, I would like them to come.
But the police come.
Because this is not a private building.
But that's a private.
No, it is not. This is a public building.
That's what you say?
It's not what I say, it's a fact. This is, is this paid by Union City taxpayers? How about now, is it back? Hello, hello, is it back? Let me know if it's back yet. Here, I'm gonna check on my feed too. Is it back? Alright, so I'm back. Yeah, I don't know what they're doing here. They're doing something, obviously. And this is garbage. I'm literally trying to save children. I'm a survivor myself. And you see it for yourself. We have documented this together, ladies and gentlemen, that they refuse to address the allegations of S assault against Edwin Martinez, M A R I N E Z. And if you could put the Board of Education number here as well, if you'd like to peacefully ask them to suspend Edwin Martinez. We want to protect children. I've got the video. They've heard the video. Exposure report, they hung up on you. The Board of Education hung up on you. Did you record the call? And anyone who calls, please record the calls. This is a one-party state, so you can legally record any phone calls. And who has called the, the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office? And keep that number going in there. And yeah, if someone could find Union City CPS, I don't think there is. I even, these allegations to DIFIS. It was formerly known as DIFIS, which is Outprotected Services of the State of New Jersey. And they hung up on me too. I mean, it's insane. Brian Stack is very similar. He's like the Jeffrey Epstein of Union City. With all the allegations I've received. Thank you, the exposure report. Make sure to subscribe to the exposure report who's in this chat. Jeffrey Epstein. Brian Stack is like the Jeffrey Epstein of Union City here. Protects S assaulters, predators. I have so many people who have come to me, ladies and gentlemen, giving me the same stories against this teacher, yet he still works with children this very moment. And they just said they're gonna call the police on me because I'm trying to get them help. And it suddenly became a private building in the last, since I came in here. And for all investigations, Melissa Stedman, thank you so much. You're an awesome mod. And, and all my mods here. And please keep smashing the like button and send us to everyone. Send us to the FBI. Send us to the New Jersey Department of Education, this video. Send us to the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office. It's gonna take some work on your part. And we all need to do our part. And I, God bless you for joining me in this live stream today. As I exposed, they are blatantly covering up for the S allegations. It's been 14 days since my video of Jonathan Almeida, 2003 graduate posted. And they, Mayor Stack, the entire Board of Education, Sylvia Abato, the superintendent of schools in Union City, has refused to even address it. And now they claim they're having a meeting? Yeah, the meeting's about me since they saw my livestream started about what? 30, 40 minutes ago? And they keep hanging up on me when I bring them these allegations. And Diane Capizzi, the terrible, terrible, terrible head of human resources, who I was told by Sylvia Abato's secretary, I had to talk with her, not Sylvia Abato's. And Sylvia wouldn't, wouldn't call me back. I talked with Diane Capizzi and she hung up on me. And I'm gonna send, share that video on my Facebook later. So please, everyone, follow my Facebook page. It has been deleted five times. That's why I only have 1.3 thousand subscribers. I'm rebuilding from scratch again, allegedly on the orders of Stack, New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy and Attorney General Matt Plackin, trying to silence me. And I keep coming back stronger and Facebook put it back. Surprisingly, after they completely disabled it permanently, and suddenly it came back a week later. And we'll just say there were some helpers, some high levels of government that helped get that together. Please follow me on Facebook, on Leroy Truth. I'm gonna post the recording of Diane Capizzi, the head of HR, hanging up on me, but not before she demanded that I, a journalist, Leroy Truth investigative journalist, send her an email that I signed. And that she will do nothing with any allegations unless I sign, have a signed email. Is that crazy? And I said, go to Jonathan Almeida on my Facebook page. It's the pinned video, 29 minute interview with the exposure report, who did an awesome job, offered some great insights. Please subscribe to the exposure report too. That's who they need to hear from, not me. Listen to Jonathan Almeida and then suspend Edwin Martinez. So again, I was, I was about to leave the building and then he just said he called the police on me. So I'm not, obviously I'm gonna wait until they get here now. And let's see what they say, Union City Police. And let's see who gets called. Because most of the police are phenomenal in Union City. Some people may say, oh, how could that be true? They have been. They have protected my rights over 13 times when they were told to unlawfully remove me from a building by Mayor Stack or Captain, or Chief Ficini. They've, they didn't, they refused 13 times. 99% of Union City Police Department has done an awesome job protecting my rights over the last two years. And I, I acknowledge them hugely for that. Because it's, it's easy to say, well, police do the wrong thing. Of course, we're going to expose that. You, I, all of us. But when they do the right thing, they protect our rights. Wouldn't you? How do you inspire someone to keep doing that? By acknowledging and celebrating when they do the right thing. And Union City Police have. But let's see when they get here. Do they do the right thing again and protect my rights? And say, hey, I'm in a public lobby. Can't be trespassed from here. Or will they attempt to arrest me? Or will they arrest me? And so stay tuned for that. Please share this video everywhere in case I get arrested. Brandon Mitchell, hello there. Yeah, Rufus, he called the police on me. Someone called him. A Zuna security guard here. And by the way, all these people who, who work in Board of Education, or most of them, they are all the puppets of Stack. They have to see Brian Stack personally in his office, the mayor, before they get a job. And they have to promise to volunteer for him, to campaign for him, which is completely illegal. So these are pay-to-play positions. And what did, what did you promise Brian Stack? Both of you, in fact, what did, what did, what did you have to promise to do for Brian Stack to get these jobs? And what's your name? And she doesn't, unfortunately, she doesn't speak English. Uh, Inglés, ma'am? Do you speak hablo inglés? No. She seems like a very nice lady. And so what, and what did you tell her? Not to talk to me? But what did you, what did Brian, what did Mayor Brian Stack tell you that you had to promise to do to get this job? Oh, he said, you see that? He just did this. It's a secret. Because that's how Mayor Brian Stack controls people. It's because there's so many good people in Union City. The majority are amazing, hardworking people that Mayor Brian Stack manipulates. Here, I'll give you a job, but... And there are people, many of them don't have high skills. They don't have, have, you know, high skills. And they're giving security jobs in exchange for doing his campaign work. And he says, jump, they're out there by the hundreds, by the hundreds. And again, Union City is an amazing place. Alright, how, how long until the police get here?
Listen.
Did you call the police?
It's time, it's time you have to go out, okay? I gotta close the building.
They closed it at what time?
Gotta close the building.
What time's it close?
Five minutes to three. Are you coming?
I'm, I'm here on business. I have official business.
Okay.
So I'm here because I want to protect the children.
Hello, Carlos. Well, mighty, look who's here.
This is one of the sycophants of Brian Stack, who has no skills whatsoever, allegedly. And he works for Royal Printing, by the way. Royal Printing is the place that, and this is the Pasante family. It's Ralph Pasante. No one knows what he really does. And, and Royal Printing is owned by the Pasante family.
Hey, how are you? I'm ready.
Alright, hey, the police are here. Alright. Hey, hello, gentlemen? Alright, so why did they call you?
This is not a public building.
It's not a public building.
And you know.
Who, who said, who said it's not a public?
They have to be buzzed into it. That's what they explained to me, that's all. They have to be buzzed into this location. It's not a public building.
I'm in, I'm in here. I got buzzed in.
You have an appointment.
I tried to get an appointment, but Sylvia Abato wouldn't call me back. And I'm here because, no, I want to finish this here.
Okay.
Because Sylvia Abato wouldn't call me back because I'm here because there are very credible allegations of S assault, S assault against a teacher, Edwin Martinez, who allegedly has been exposing himself to students and having S with students. And he's still teaching. So I am here to get protection of those children because Mayor Brian Stack and the board have refused to suspend him, even though I have a graduate who made these allegations on my show two weeks ago. So, again, I got no issue with either of you, as you know. But I, no, I don't do favors when my rights are being trampled, you know?
But this is in a public building. They're telling me that you're not one of them.
Of course, it's a public building. Is this, is this paid by, by public, public dollars?
Buzzed in, you have to be.
I was buzzed in. Look at me, I'm here. Hey, they got, they got four, they got four police officers here now.
Leroy, who do you have to make the appointment with here? Are you making an appointment?
Right, they're, they're claiming I had to make an appointment with Sylvia Abado, but I have called numerous times, and she has refused to call me back.
So maybe appointment now?
No, they, they, they will not let me see her. Oh, look, we have one, two. You gotta see this, everybody. They got one, they got six police officers here now. And so again, I'm here on official business, trying to save children.
You have a car, you have, you, Harold, you have a car? You asked me, but Harold, you have a car?
They got six police officers here now, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm trying to save children from S assault. And this is, and who told you this is a private building? Because I'm here, I was buzzed in, I'm here.
Who buzzed him in? Who buzzed, who buzzed him in?
Can you speak English? My people don't understand.
He doesn't understand it, okay?
He doesn't understand English? How can he work in the Board of Education? He doesn't understand English. Did I enter? Look, I'm here.
I'm, I'm here on behalf of the superintendent.
I understand. I just wanna, I wanna know what his rules are as far as how he lets people in or out. So, tiene que tener un appointment.
Here, one, one, two, three, four, four now. So they, they had two leads for a man trying to protect children. And he doesn't, he doesn't speak English. How can he work here?
And that the secretary that makes the appointments for you to meet that lady is in a meeting, and she can't break the meeting. So just do it within your right to make the appointment.
Right, I, I have called numerous times to make an appointment with Sylvia Abado. I have called. That's why I'm here, because there are credible allegations of sexual, here, let me turn this around, everybody. Credible allegations of S assault against Edwin Martinez, a teacher right now, and you all have, most of you have children. So I'm here to protect the children and make sure this teacher gets suspended, because Mayor Brian Stack is refusing to suspend this teacher.
You need to speak to somebody here, and you have an appointment first.
No, they would, I'm telling you, they wouldn't give me an appointment. I have called, for two weeks I've been calling, and they refuse to give me an appointment. That's why I'm here in person peacefully, to try to save these children and have Edwin Martinez suspended immediately, and have an investigation done by Hudson County Prosecutor's Office into Martinez and into Mayor Stack and the board and Sylvia Abado Superintendent, because they are, because they are covering this up, these sexual assault allegations for over two weeks now. Yeah. So Sylvia Abado.
A request can be submitted in writing to Mrs. Abado or to Board of Education, but showing up in person does not guarantee you access to the building.
This guy, this, this guy is useless, by the way. I have called for two weeks to get an appointment and to talk with Sylvia Abado, and she refused to give me an appointment. So what this guy is saying is diary of the mouth right here. Ignore, ignore him. He's, he's not an authorized person to say this. He has, he has no, he has no authorization whatsoever here. He is literally Mr. Blather. No, you, no, you're not. Just because you say so doesn't mean it's true. He is not an official person here. No, you don't do a written request. You call on the phone. This is what normal people do. You call on the phone, and you, and you talk to this superintendent, or they give you a, or they give you an appointment, and they have ignored me for two weeks to protect children. Don't even listen to this guy. This guy is useless. He has no authorization whatsoever to talk on behalf of the superintendent. They blocked me. What they do at the meetings, listen to this, because you're, you're one of the very good guys. I, I attempt to go to the meetings, and Stack, what he does is he has 50, 60, 70 people show up to block me from coming to these meetings, so I can't get in to speak. This has happened numerous times. They are disgusting here. And this officer is also, by the way, he's, he's trying to be helpful. And thank you for joining me, and please call the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office now, demanding that they do, open up an investigation on Edwin Martinez and call Board of Education here as well. They have been blocking me unlawfully from meetings for two years here, and I have documented proof of that. So everything this guy's saying is a lie right now.
Thank you, officers.
Alright, the building closes in one minute. It's 2:59 right now, and I will, at 3 o'clock, I will leave, because that, the building is then closed. But in the meantime, I appreciate, everyone here has been very calm, grounded. They did not go hands-on. And so, but the thing is, you're listening to the wrong person. He has no authorization. You're listening to a blathering person. This is sexual assault allegations. Do you understand that? I'm talking and calling for two weeks superintendent. I don't need to email. And this is ridiculous. Anyone else calls and gets an appointment except Leroy Truth. You know that for a fact, sir. You know that, Lieutenant. Alright, let's see what time. 3 o'clock, leaving. Again, they sent, here we go. It's 3 o'clock right now, so. God bless, God bless you all. No, they, they blocked me. No, yeah, they, no, they blocked, now I'm telling you. I want you to understand. They literally filled the meeting up. Stack tells Board of Education members to come here, and they fill the meeting up, and they say the meeting is at capacity. Alright, and so they have blocked me for, for two years.
On the days that you show up?
Yes. They, they will, Stack will have, you know, 50, 60 people show up. The meeting has a capacity of 49. They have no interest in being here for the meeting. They come here because Brian Stack tells them to. I come here, they blocked me from the door numerous times, but then that guy you're just talking to almost broke my ankle. The door was open here. I was attempting to get to the meeting, and he closed the door on me, almost broke my ankle, all on video.
You have a paper trail that you, you did it by their rules, you formally?
There are, that's not the rules. Anyone else, every human being in Union City, or, or anywhere, they can call up on the phone, and they get an appointment. He's, he's lying to you right now. That's Ralph Pasante. So I, I want to acknowledge all the police who were very grounded. They did not escalate, and this is, that's remarkable. You give credit where it's due. And there were six who showed up. They had two stand down and leave. Everyone here, they were grounded, and they were professional. I will always give credit. Because how do you inspire people to do more of the right thing by acknowledging them? So I acknowledge everyone from Lieutenant Gaston and, and everyone. Right, but the last thing is what I'm here to address is the alleged S assault against students, going on for 23 years. And a gentleman who's a graduate, 2003 graduate named Jonathan Almeida, he came on my show two weeks ago, and he said that this coach, Edwin Martinez, he alleges, would whip out his dot, dot, dot. He's saying to the, to the students, who wants to see my dot, dot, dot? And he whip it out, and then put it back in, and then if anyone looked at it, he said, oh, you're the GA one. And he would do that for years and years. I have numerous students who have come forward about this. That's why I'm here, because they refuse to suspend him. So I just wanted to give you, you know, knowledge of that. But go to my Facebook. It's the pinned video of Jonathan Almeida, 2003 graduate, in his words. So, so with that, God bless you all. Enjoy a great day. Okay. No one should have to work this hard to protect children from S assaulters. Yep, you could be, you could be right. Is that Ella? So they sent six police officers to try to stop a man trying to protect children. And right now, Assistant Principal, unless they secretly suspended him, and they haven't told me, right now, that person we've been describing is working with children right now. Is that okay with you? Any other city in the country? That teacher, after allegations came from a graduate, would have been suspended. Any, every single other city in the United States of America, except Union City, because Mayor Brian Stack runs the Board of Education, picks them, appoints them, and runs Sylvia Abado, and the, the liar in lavender, also known as the, the not smart Ralph Pasante, who is blathering odds, and I, I represent the superintendent. He represents idiocracy. And, and not protecting children. Did anyone, anyone ask about the allegations I, I brought here? Did anyone? No one? And how's it sound, and by the way, put a one there if, if we're still broadcasting. Put a one if we're still broadcasting. So, one last time, can you put the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office number in, in here? And they're closed now, so any calls to Board of Education will go unanswered. Alright, I'm glad we have ones, ones, okay? And I'm a survivor myself. I know what these, what the children went through. And if anyone wants an attorney, Jonathan Almeida has hired an attorney. If you would like to talk with him, if you are a survivor of any type of interactions that, that were inappropriate on behalf of the allegations against Edwin Martinez as a teacher or as a football coach, call me, text me, email me. 305-707-8325, 305-707-8325. This is critically important, that these children be protected. The Hudson County Prosecutor's Office must open up an investigation. They got lots of tips here, and they can hear Jonathan's words on my video that's on Facebook. Please subscribe to my Facebook as well. Follow me on Facebook. Follow the page Leroy Truth. It's the first video, the whole 29-minute interview with the Exposure Report, David Snow. He did a great job, offered some great insightful questions and perspectives. So I am disgusted by the entire Union City Board of Education. No one is protecting the children. I'm the only man in New Jersey trying to protect these children, along with David Snow, Exposure Report, so not the only man, and my team, Scalzo Foto and Vinnie of Garden Stand Accountability. We're the only men exposing this. No other media is. They won't touch it. I gave this story to John Heinis, Hudson County View, two days ago. I asked, hey, why haven't you done a story on this? I texted him. He said, what? Story on what? Never heard about it. There's no way in hell you didn't hear about it. But he did once. I sent him two videos of Jonathan, not Leroy Truth saying this stuff happened. Jonathan is claiming this, these, these things happen. And he did zero story, because he is allegedly controlled by Mayor Brian Stack. They all are. Hutpos are all allegedly controlled by Brian Stack. So I so appreciate you spending some time with me, as I'm trying to protect these children, and right now, these children are not protected. Mayor Brian Stack and the entire board is covering this up for over two weeks. So please, call Hudson County Prosecutor's Office always peacefully, because if they won't protect the children, we will protect the children. You will protect the children. And I talked to someone who graduated 2024, who said, he claims that Coach Martinez did the same thing when he was playing football at the age of seven. He was in it for four years. And the coach was allegedly doing the indecent exposure. I feel like I'm an upside-down world. I literally sometimes have to pinch myself. Is this real? Any other civilized society, the first thing they do is suspend that teacher and coach. And it's been two weeks, and he's not suspended. So with your help and support, asking the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office to do the right thing. And they said, well, we have to have a victim come. You got the video. The victims are afraid. Listen to Almeida. You open up an investigation. Or do you say, oh, we got a tip, but we're not gonna do anything with it, even though we hear a graduate making these allegations? Until someone actually comes into our office, we're not gonna follow up on it. In the meantime, how many other children may allegedly be hurt, injured, or worse? So I'm gonna end this now. God bless you all. Anyone would like to donate to the work I do? It would be greatly appreciated and greatly helpful. On November 1st, it'll be 23 months since I first stepped foot into Union City City Hall with Good Guy Activism. Please subscribe to him. He's awesome. Got one of the best channels. He's one of the best auditors in the country. He's got my vote for Auditor of the Year 2026, Good Guy Activism. He invited me to come to Union City on December 1st, 2023. That's how long I've been working on this story. And what is, what is the mission? To make sure Stack, Mayor, corrupt Mayor and Senator Brian Stack gets indicted. And by the way, oh, thank you, MP, so much. God bless you. $10, $10 Super Chat. Mayor Brian Stack is also the head of the Senate Judiciary Committee. He's got to be removed from that committee. He picks all the judges, all the prosecutors, the Attorney General. He picks them. So many judges are in his pocket. Not all, thank goodness. There's a number of really good judges yet. Many of the prosecutors are in his pocket, or his influence. Not all, thank God, but many. He's gotta be removed from that position. And yeah, and as you said, and it's, all, all is revealed. My goal is to get to 100,000 subscribers by January 1st, 2026. Please help me. Please share my channel with everybody. We need to get the message out to more and more and more people. So please subscribe to the Exposure Report with my very good friend, David Snow, Garden Stand Accountability, and Scalzo Foto. God bless you, and stay tuned for more updates. Check my Facebook. This is where I put most of my work. I post five, 10 times a day on Facebook with updates. Keep checking Facebook for updates. So God bless you all. Yeah, I love each and every one of you. You are the true patriots. You are the ones who care about children. You are the ones who are making sure America is free, and corrupt government officials are held accountable to the full extent of the law. I'm Leroy Truth. God bless you all. Please subscribe.